You all good?
All set. I'd like to open up meeting, July 25th, 2023. Start by pledging the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple of executive sessions tonight, so we're gonna start with those. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We're going to an executive session, 405-6E, meeting with council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we will be back. Over there. Okay, I'd like to... Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We come out of executive session, 405-6E, meeting with council at whatever time it was. At 5:46.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion that the selectmen authorized the code enforcement officer through the town attorney to issue notice of a violation to Acton LLC for failure to transfer the Eagle Trace Common Area to the association.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay. You want that?
We have a second executive session again.
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We're going to executive session, 405-6A, one, personnel issue.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we'll be right back.
405...
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We come out of executive session, 405-6A, dash one, for personnel issue at 6:03 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Done with those. We're gonna go to warrant bills. All signed up, guys?
All signed.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? The minutes of the last meeting. Oh, I had them right in front of me. You got them right there?
Aye. I haven't seen them.
They're not in any piles. See what they were in with the bills?
I haven't seen them.
They look good.
Yeah, it was July 20th.
That'll be fine.
19th?
19th, yeah. I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the July 19th.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Town of Ministry is weekly update.
All right, just a couple of things for you this week. First is to let you know that Sabeo Techs got back to us and they are ready to start the road assessment and they're looking for a group from Acton to meet with to figure out what our goals are and kind of what concerns we have with what roads and where you want them to kind of focus their efforts. So I'm looking to determine who you want to be part of that so they can schedule a startup meeting. I mean, I'm assuming the road commissioners, the road liaison. Do you want to involve anybody else?
I... What do you think? You know, the road liaison, I mean, the road commissioners should be about it. I mean, let them go and decide.
Maybe another selectman, just because we, I mean, we hired, we put this, you know, you put this package together and the board is the one that sold the Sabeo Tech. The chair and project.
Why not a member of the road committee?
Yeah, I have no...
Have they got a chairman?
So they're meeting tomorrow night, so...
I would ask, I would ask the chairman of the road committee to sit in on it as well.
So they're gonna create a new chairman next week, right?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. So I think they ought to be involved.
Okay.
I mean, I would think the priority would probably be the major arteries and then let them work in the wheel. But Adam and Will should be able to take care of that anyways.
Okay. Good. All right. Next is just to let you know that last week I inadvertently said that the solar CD was 90,000. When we were looking at the number, it was actually 92,400. So there wasn't as much interest as we talked about, but in any event, there is no escrow agreement, Tom, that you asked to look at. So we have legal looking at the interest-bearing piece of it because there was no, there was a motion made by the planning board. It was actually during COVID Zoom that instructed them, you know, to collect X amount of dollars, but that's the extent of it. There's no...
Are you being televised?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. So just, I'll get back to you with more information on the escrow. The attorney is looking into the interest piece of it?
So... Somebody turned over $90,000 without an agreement? Is that, is that the situation?
They had instruction and a motion from the planning board. I mean, the ordinance clearly says there has to be a, you know, a bond, a surety or something.
So we're gonna get, so we're gonna get an agreement? We're gonna, we're gonna enter into some kind of escrow agreement with the party?
I was under the impression that one of the zoning changes that was made, and I didn't read through the details of them because that's not my area, that was that you were taking the cash piece out. And if that cash piece was taken out, that we were possibly gonna have a conversation with this company to get them swapped over, but that was not taken out. That never made its way to the zoning floor. So I spoke to the CEO.
Before my time.
So when we were doing, we're going through the zoning issue, that was one of the big deals. I was kind of pushing it because I, we see all these accounts with cash in them, okay? And because they've jumped from here to there. And so what we've done with the pits is we made it so they don't have to do a cash, they can do a bond.
Yeah.
Okay? And myself, I would prefer a bond, okay? Because it's less, you know, we don't have to worry about having someone, you know, $90,000 or so much. We're playing babysitter and now we're playing pretty much investing in somebody else's money without no agreement, which I can't believe we have no agreement. Because, I mean, really...
I mean, when I say agreement, there's no stipulations. The town and the company didn't agree to certain details regarding the money.
Yeah, who gets the interest of the money?
So do we have the authority to move that from an escrow to a letter of credit?
That or a bond, right?
Or a bond? Do we have that authority? Or does that have to go back to the planning board?
I think what we're gonna do is see what, what the lawyer figures out on that, see if we do have the authority to do that.
Okay.
It might be the first step. See if we do it all at once.
Yeah, they've asked you once to change it.
A being who?
Solar, solar already asked the town once to consider a different...
I would think that we probably have that authority, but we should just make sure that we don't need to go to the planning board.
All right.
And...
We don't wanna override that.
No, no.
I think, if I remember correctly, the reason why it was cash was we were afraid that they would default on their bond or not pay.
Right, but as we look at some of these gravel pits and other big projects in town, we're accepting letters of credits from them, so how is it different? I mean, there's no guarantee those companies are gonna be around.
And this is not our property. This is privately owned property, so it's principally their issue as opposed to our issue.
That was my big beef for the whole thing, was we're really the third party in this deal. And I don't even want to be any third party. I don't wanna be involved.
I mean, I agree. I agreed back then that we really shouldn't have the cash.
So you're gonna contact...
All right, I'll get back to you on that. Yep.
Good, thank you.
Next primarily, Ed, for you to let you know that I turned over seven applications for the new fire, fire EMT position to the fire chief, and he's gonna be setting something up with you to start doing interviews.
Okay.
And that was budgeted effective July 1st, so we're anxious to get it filled.
You got seven?
We got seven.
That's awesome.
We also changed up the wording, thanks to Tom, on the job posting for the deputy clerk and finally pulled the trigger with Indeed. And we have 11 applicants, including a couple that came in. So my free time, we'll be setting up some interviews hopefully next week.
Right.
There is, and I wanna try to do it sooner than later because there is a motor vehicle training coming up in a runway coming over the end of August. So my goal is to get somebody in that class right away because at next week's meeting, we need to talk about some days off in August that I want, and we need to figure out how we're gonna make that happen. Best interest for the town and your 19-year employee, so I can't leave staff alone at this point.
I think we've talked before that you earned your time.
I know, but we don't wanna close. I'm trying to come up with some sort of alternative.
Okay, I hope you do. That's great.
I'm trying. I want the town to know I'm trying, but I can't, you know, I can only give so much. And last is to let you know that the Town of Shapley got back to us regarding, just today, regarding the contract deputy. I told you last week that Sheriff King indicated he was, the question was, would Acton slash Shapley sign the contract, renew it as is? Shapley let me know today that they are willing to do that and they're ready to have a special in town meeting to go forward. So before they decide if they're doing that with or without Acton, really the question to the select board is, are you interested in having a conversation about renewing it as is?
Have we seen a budget proposal?
Uh, no.
We seen a contract?
No. Contracts, no. We can get an updated...
They say it's as is, but I'd love to see the contract and a budget proposal.
Okay.
We probably ought to have that in hand before...
I'm sure that it hasn't been done yet because the current one doesn't run out until the end of December. So an updated contract?
Can we signal that we're open to that?
I think so.
I think so.
I think we were skeptical before because they were kind of wishing, wishing whether or not they were...
Well, there was discussion about hiring hours versus definitely, there's a lot of different things. So we wanna have those conversations. We'd like to see an updated contract and find out what the new rate would be.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, where are we? Department head, community chair updates? Do not see any, okay, liaison updates?
I see Adam. I know Will's not here. I understand that you folks have submitted a summer maintenance plan?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it's a little further down? Okay, excuse me. Let's move on. Yeah.
Okay, well, I got one now. I've been meeting with some people for the rec. So we still got more interviews to do, working on it?
I have no updates.
The only updates I got, I have met with both road commissioners.
So what?
I have met with both road commissioners.
No, that's your update?
Yeah, that's my update. I met with them. Well, you're gonna find the scope.
Okay. Yep. Awesome.
And I've been working with Kelly and Jennifer on onboarding the new accounting firm and executing the investments that were authorized at a previous meeting. And things are moving along well there, so on both counts.
Okay, so all the liaison updates, old business, transfer station trailers.
So Robin did reach out to me a couple of hours ago saying that he didn't think that he was gonna be able to make it. The deadline was today for these transfer station trailers. I'm assuming we're still gonna go over them?
Conex boxes?
I'm sorry?
Conex boxes.
Sure. Transfer station box, what do you call them? Conex?
Conex boxes.
Have you ever heard of that?
No.
They're not trailers. You don't tow them around, so...
I call them ceiling containers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're moving forward.
We all know what they are.
Thank you. Okay, so we had gotten, all right, he had gotten a couple of bids during budget season. Originally, he had gotten prices of $5,000 each. This was from Advanced Roll Off, and it's just 40-foot storage containers used at $5,000 each, and that's what he used for budget purposes. And he did get two or three different companies that offered that price. We also received one from J.A. Brock Land Management indicating that they had two 40-foot-high cube storage containers and they are used, they'd be delivered to the transfer station at $4,500 each.
What are they, how tall are they? Does it say?
Two 40-foot-high cube storage containers.
Oh, there's no height on there? Okay, yep.
No, but we asked specifically, I think, for, was it nine foot? There was a specific, there was a specific posting on the website.
What were the other ones? Did they have a...
Nine, so nine-foot high is what we requested.
Nine foot?
And the bid from Advanced doesn't have it, but he physically called those back in budget season, so I have to believe it's nine foot. Again, I know that there's been communications between Mr. Brock and Rob, and I also have to believe they're nine foot. Do you know, Ed?
I have no idea. I've never seen them.
These are all used, right?
They are not nine foot. And how do you know?
It has to be a high container, HD, in order for it to be nine foot.
What's that?
It has to be an HD container. The specifics of it have to be HD for it to be 90 high.
High cube.
If it's the iCube.
That's what you said they were, high cube.
At least one of them.
It does say high cube. Okay, so nine foot, so. All right, and then we got a sealed bid.
Yeah, mine too.
This is from Sherway Incorporated. So they are looking at, they've got two used 40-foot-high cube overseas containers at $4,700 each delivered. And then they've got two brand-new ones, high cube overseas containers at $6,000 each, brand-new. So we've got...
So the low bid is Brock?
At used ones for 45.
I think we ought to ask Robin to take a look at all of these because the condition could be different.
Let him give us that recommendation.
To understand, yeah, yes, because we don't, you know, one might be five years old, another's 20 years old.
So the Connecticut ones, he's never gonna be able to go see. I mean, those aren't even anywhere in the area.
Well, they may be able to at least send a picture or something that, you know, that would...
I don't, you know, we might wanna entertain the idea of brand-new. If you're only talking a little bit extra to get...
Do we have the money for that?
$1,300?
I'm sure he does. I know we appropriated $10,000. I know the other day he wanted to cut trees for $4,000, we told him to, because that's gonna be part of the other, he's got plenty of money.
Part of the engineering.
I've been told that some, that often these, these are used once in shipping, and then they're sold as used. So there isn't much difference between a new and a used. Is that right, Ed?
Yeah, that is right.
And so we just gotta find out what, how old they are.
Products come in from overseas. The US doesn't export anything. They don't ship them back. They get sold.
So they sell them as used.
Yep.
So why don't we have Robin look into it, find out, you know, what, get his, get a recommendation for that?
Get his recommendation.
Makes sense?
Yeah, because we don't wanna buy anything that's, you know, painted all the side.
No, 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 no.
You know, that's rusty, because a lot of times they're sitting on the harbors.
Yeah.
You know, get rusted and all that.
We're looking, we'll see if we can get him some pictures from the ones that are around here anyway.
That's great. And have him give us his recommendation.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
We're big fan of low new.
You know, at $1,000, that might not be a bad, a bad thing to do.
Okay, rec field engineering report.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about whether or not Sabeo Techs would entertain impartial approvals of their offers, and the answer is yes. So you talked in the meeting, I went back and looked at it. You talked about doing just a schematic design for 2,800 for the rec. So just need a motion to sign up to that amount, and we'll get moving on that one.
Make a motion to go forward with a, an agreement with Sabeo to do schematic design for the rec field in the amount of $2,800.
Second.
All in favor?
That was a good idea.
Do you just want one?
No, I need a majority.
Okay.
And the transfer station, I went back and checked, you did vote to approve one and two on that one, but you didn't actually sign, so I'm gonna pass this down. That was for the survey services and the design.
Good.
So no motion on this one, just some signatures. You did that on the July 5th meeting.
Pass it on down. I think this goes with it.
David?
I couldn't find where you signed. I bonded in, I was trying to figure out where you signed.
Oh, okay. I tried to leave the official spot for you, David.
Oh, no, no, no.
There you go.
I didn't know where to sign.
So nobody signed the bye-bye?
Well, I figured the chairman would, but he chose not to, so. Got all the signatures.
Okay, we all good here?
Yep.
Awesome. Sir?
There you go.
Okay, well, set with that. We're down to new business, Renaissance Fair Traffic Plan.
So per your request, I asked Melanie to come to tonight's meeting and come on up. She's going to talk to you about her plans for the upcoming weekend.
Great.
So our big issue came about Sunday morning when the officer did not come in, and I was not aware of this until 1 o'clock when the second scheduled officer came in and said, oh, the guy didn't show up this morning. So unfortunately, yes, things went sideways on Sunday morning. We didn't have any issues on Saturday. That seemed to be working well. So what we have done...
Excuse me, were there officers there on Saturday?
There were.
There were, okay.
Yes.
And do you think that made the difference?
Huge difference.
It did? Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, because I remember looking out as I was working in the ticket booth, and you have to understand, I'm the point of contact for everything that goes sideways. So I'm fixing ATMs and I'm running the ticket booth and I'm going to the back gate. And so I did manage to look out to the front gate and I saw how they had people along the side of the road coming in and letting traffic through. So I saw it once, I knew it happened at one point, but I did not notice what was going on Sunday morning. So what we have done is we've booked Twin State Traffic Control. We managed to find someone who was not booked. We've hired two flaggers. So they will be there Saturday and Sunday. So we won't have this, oh, nobody's there. We do, we did hear today from New York County Sheriff, they have someone booked all day for Sunday. As of yet, they're still actively working to find somebody for Saturday. But we will have the flaggers on Saturday as well, okay? We have created new signage, which I think looks really good. And we will have these all down 109 on the right-hand side, obviously, to try to encourage people to pull the line off to the side, okay? We've added people to the parking crew and we're gonna split them up into two teams. Last weekend, it was one team basically parking everybody and working from the back forward. Now we're gonna split them up so we have two different areas parking at the same time, hopefully getting more people parked faster. We've also decided to take only the right-turning traffic into Gate 1 and put the other flagger onto Gate 2 and take left-turning traffic into Gate 2, okay? Which will allow us to also use that, that track on the inside in the fairgrounds to queue people in.
So everybody coming, going south will be going in on Gate 2?
Exactly, exactly. And I think that will also...
Gate 2 is at the far end of the fairground?
Closes this way.
Right, exactly. So that way, not only do we have two entrances going at the same time, but we don't have to stop Gate 1 for someone to turn in from the left. See what I'm saying? So we're trying to create this faster flow to get them on the grounds, and we've got the long track in the front where we can probably have 50 cars lined up waiting to be parked because, and they'll be off the road. So, and then I am gonna go by a few, there's a few spots where we think we could use some traffic cones just to help direct. But I think with the flaggers, the signs, and everything else, I'm hoping that it comes together to make, I mean, like I said, Saturday was our bigger day. We had almost 5,000 people come Saturday and there were no, not the issues that we saw on Sunday morning.
You still had traffic almost to the foot of the lake, but...
Right, but it was less chaotic.
Yeah, two people who were parking the cars by themselves.
Yeah. No, I think with this new plan, this, this is exactly what I wanted to see.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we really, you know, we wanted to improve this. I mean, we want our patrons to get in faster and we don't wanna cause a problem for the town. You know, we're happy to be here. We're happy that Acton Fair Ground has helped us create this fair. We were happy Friday morning with the TV station coming out and talking to us.
That was good.
That was pretty awesome, you know? So, but, you know, my inexperience, it's been a big learning experience, you know?
You know, we called, we called you on Monday because of what happened on Sunday. We thought that, you know, I got calls from a couple of selectmen, other people, I got bombarded Sunday and Monday. But we figured we would call you on Monday...
Thank you.
To give you...
Time.
We're not, we can't make any decisions until Wednesday.
Right.
And if we had, we had a meeting on Wednesday, we discussed, it didn't give you a lot of time between that and Saturday.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it was my boyfriend Dave that happened to know a guy who knew a guy who managed to find the flagging crew that wasn't booked because everybody I called was booked. You know, this is last-minute stuff.
We didn't, we didn't wanna, we don't wanna make this difficult on you.
Oh, I know.
And, and we're getting it from all sides here. And I was getting it from every side on Monday.
No.
Every side.
Every side.
I had people calling from every point in New York.
Well, that was after the email, I mean, that was after her email, though. You, I mean, that's different.
Before, before you called them off, I was getting calls from Vermont, Massachusetts.
I apologize. I mean, when I got the call on Monday, the only two words that stuck in my head was revoke permit.
We spoke a lot longer than those two words.
I know, but trust me, when you hear that and your heart falls into your stomach and your nerves go on fire and you're like, what am I gonna do?
And I know you did.
Well, I had to tell my people because I didn't know what was gonna happen.
This was a situation that really isn't as bad as what got portrayed on Facebook.
Right. And it wasn't supposed to go on Facebook, okay? That, that was, and once I found out it had, that's when I went to everybody and I was like, yo, guys, you know, pull it back. This is private, unfair stuff. It wasn't meant for the general public. I didn't send it to the general public. I just sent it to my vendors and my performers.
Yeah, and honestly, at the end of the day, what would, what we, all we're doing is looking out for the residents of the town.
Well, of course.
And, you know, in a situation like this, we're gonna try to give you every opportunity
I appreciate that.
To do what you can.
Yeah.
And, you know, we also, we've gotta look through our mass gathering ordinances and make sure that we tidy some things up like that.
Yeah, we gotta tighten up.
Okay. Nobody wanted to pull anything from anybody. I know, and I, you guys are pretty passionate about what you do, because I think thirty-something emails I got.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so, but-
Well, I apologize.
Next time, in a situation like this, we're trying to work with you.
Right.
Going to social media and flooding the gates like that was not a good idea.
That was not my intention.
That was actually a bad idea.
My intention was only to inform my people that, hey, we got something going on, you know, we're, I was scared. I'll be honest, I was scared.
We've got residents on the side streets that apparently their driveways were blocked.
Which, both days, or?
Yeah.
No?
Thirteenth Street?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, people were parking in front of, at the, in front of people's-
See, they're not supposed to be parking on Thirteenth, we put up signs and we put up-
I think it was Eleventh, I think it was Twelfth Street, wasn't it?
I may not have the right street, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Right.
So, what, yep. I hope you got, you want to come up? You got a question?
Yeah, I have a question, and just like a point of clarification.
Sure, thank you.
About the layout of the fairgrounds. And to put your mind at ease, we're on Thirteenth Street, we didn't have any issues this year.
Okay.
Our road commissioner spoke with you, we put measures into place. But I did see other cars, like East Shore Drive was one that we had passed-
Right.
On Sunday.
Right.
I didn't see any issues on Saturday, but it was Sunday that was problematic.
It was Sunday, yeah.
And just not as inconvenient because of safety. If someone needed to get, you know, a truck from the ambulance through, it wouldn't go. But, but my, my point of clarification was simply, the layout of the fairgrounds, because there's a big lot adjacent to the fairgrounds, right on Thirteenth Street, and that didn't look like it was utilized this year. And I wondered if it was-
You mean, talk about the pit?
The sand pit?
The sand pit.
Yeah, it was.
It was on Sunday.
It was. It should have been.
We didn't see any activity there on Sunday.
I'll have to check with the parking crew.
So, was that, is that like Gate One or Gate Two?
That's, no, you don't go through a gate, it has its own entrance now on 109?
Yeah, yeah, but when they're talking about you're going to direct people into these two separate gates.
Okay, once Gate Two, once we filled up the main fairgrounds, that's where we fill first. We'll move the Gate Two crew to the pit.
Perfect, just so you know, that it was, maybe it was just unutilized, but that's, that's a vast area.
We had a smaller crowd on Sunday. So, I don't know if maybe they didn't need it as much, I can check with the parking crew.
Judging by, you know, the condition of 109, I think the need was there, but I'll leave that to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, there's, there's one thing that you said that I don't really feel like has been appeased in this plan. And you said that you didn't realize that there was an issue until well after the fact. And my concern is a breakdown in communication, so what if something does happen this weekend? What is the plan that you get notified early enough, rather than two or three hours until the next officer? Do you have these flaggers and people checking in to verify that they actually did show up, and they're going to be there and present? And then what if there is an incident or something?
You see this gentleman here? He's my traffic control guy. And he, he will make sure that they are there.
So, you're going to check if they're there?
And if they don't show up, he will inform me, and he'll be making phone calls.
And is that the same case, that if there is an emergency situation, they're going to make you aware of that? Because that's, that's where I seem like there was that misc, or lack of communication that allowed this to happen?
Yes, I didn't have anybody in that role. I had the parking crew, and they just take care of parking. And then the officers didn't know how to connect with me. In fact, the officer that showed up on Sunday asked some folks, and we have several people around the fair with radios, and they radioed in, hey, there's an officer looking for Mel, I said I didn't do it. And then he found me at the ticket booth, which is typically where I am.
Do you have any, I don't, I don't, I've been to the Renaissance Fair last year, but do you have anything, like, if people needed to contact? Like you said, they had to look around, like, a band, or a sign, or something, so people say, if there's something's gone, we know who to contact immediately, so they can get in contact with you?
Well, we have, like I said, both ticket booths are points of contact.
Okay.
So, when people need us, lost and found, emergency situations, that's usually where they go, okay? Ticket booth, but right behind the ticket booth, we have an information booth.
So, I guess another thing is, I've been to the fair, the ticket booths are one side of the fair, do you have anyone on the other side? In case there's anything that happens down there?
We added a second tent.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we knew we needed to, because of the way that fairground is, well, basically porous, and people pour in from all directions. We have a lot of people that get into the fair and don't pay. We know we do.
So, one thing that, I like to make a suggestion.
Yeah.
I mean, what you've done here, I think is, you've done well. But one thing we were concerned about was, like Milton Mills, where there were some driveways that were blocked off. So, I, we don't want to ask you a boatload, but I think this is something that might solve some issues, is possibly having some signs made up, put at the end of the driveway, do not block drive.
Okay.
Can you do that, so people don't park in front of people's driveways?
How many driveways are we talking about?
I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned about the roads. There's roads all the way down through the private road.
Oh, 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 okay, so at the top of the road?
When they're sitting there, it's not blocking the road so they can't get out, you know, so just start to block the roads. At least the private roads, I would, I would think that would be somewhere to start. Because you've got 10th, 11th, 12th, all the way up through there. Even at East Shore Drive, you know, people-
I don't even know where all these are, guys, I'm-
Yeah, it's right down the street from where you are.
A clueless here.
Couples, we don't want to ask for much. But, but that way, there, I think, I think that would, that would be a good idea. Some communication, you know, like to get your cell number.
Yep.
I'm not going to post yours online, though.
Yours is on the website, it's not my fault. I didn't post it online. Did somebody post it online, like social media?
They screenshotted your emails, like the second one, you said, stop reaching out to them, because I think you got the point. Yeah, that one was posted too. For the board, they're, well, they saw all the emails you sent.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I just had to throw that one in there, but we would like to have your, your-
Yes, absolutely.
A way where we can, can hold you in case there is an issue.
Yep.
But, I, you know, I, I'm glad you came in with what you did. You know, I think this got a little overblown, from zero to a hundred in a hurry. And this is great, thank you.
This is exactly what I was hoping to, hoping to see, so. And the fair is great, I haven't gone this year, I've been in past years.
I don't know if I dare now.
You'll be fine.
I think they can probably find a suit of armor for you.
We'll, we'll put a knight to guard you. We'll put you with Her Majesty, nobody will touch you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
All right.
Okay, where are we now? District One, scope of work, project, he's not here.
So, in front of you?
Adam, you're going to, you're not presenting that for him, right? Okay, so I guess he's like-
You can just look at him and table until next week, or unless you want to go through them, the first ones?
Well, you know, he's here.
Who is?
No.
So, we're skipping District One?
Yeah, we're going to just skip, he's not here to present it, right?
Yeah, but I don't know how soon he's doing the work, so.
Well, he's not here, I, you know, I mean-
We'll put him on next week's.
He should present it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's his work.
All right.
Adam's here, we'll let him present his.
We got this here, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
How would you like to start? I gave you my project list.
They have the estimates first.
We'll do the estimates first. I'm curious.
First one is Buzzell Road.
Buzzell Road, that's the first one of mine.
I kept them in order.
Mine might not be, hopefully they're. Buzzell Road, obviously, because I want to pave it this year, hopefully that's the plan. I want to get all the culverts done. There's two up top, there's one down by my house. I want to get all those trees we cut last year, get all the stumps going out of there. That bank right there, when we do the big culvert there, it's going to have to be reinforced, riprap and stuff like that. And then, get rid of the, get it all prepped for paving.
So, are these estimates? They are estimates, we'll, okay. There'll be a final accounting when you get the work done?
Yep.
Okay.
Peck Road?
My treasure hunt road. Peck, there it is.
This is for the major project, right?
This is the one I've been working on, yep. I found another culvert that's almost, I would have figured it out, almost sixty feet long, at the top of the hill.
Oh, yeah.
Goes on an angle.
Was it crossing a section?
Yep, and that big cross intersection. We fixed the dirt side this week to finish up some washouts, and got the ditching so it's properly draining, so that less damage will happen up there if we have any major rain. And I found that the culvert, I didn't realize was there, because that whole ditch line was completely full.
You know, I don't think I ever cleaned that out, because I didn't know it was there.
And it goes on, and I just stepped it out real quick, and it's almost sixty feet long. It's on a big angle, heading down the hill. And you can only see one end of it, and we can't see the other end with the drainage end.
You can't shorten it up, put it somewhere else while you're doing an easement, so a sixty-foot culvert's not a very good idea.
No, it's three culverts plugged together, so, and with the road being ground, it's going to be a lot easier, and so it shouldn't be too bad, just the culverts have gotten so expensive.
So, what are you going to do, replace it?
Yes, I have four of them to replace.
As, as is sixty feet, excuse me?
Yeah, so I have three other ones that are going to be forty feet long, and then I got the big one up top.
Okay.
So, that way, I'm enlarging everything, so, upsizing, so hopefully there's no washouts like we've had in the past up there. Just trying to get everything flowing properly, and, and, so that's for that road. What do we got now?
Peacock.
Peacock. I am getting the shoulder machine on Monday. And we're going to get all this new hot top shoulders, they've got finished, finished. So, I'm going to get Peacock and Point Road done Monday.
Do you have any that hasn't been finished?
Youngs Ridge.
Youngs Ridge?
Yes.
When do you plan on finishing that?
When they come to pave Buzzell. But I have to do some work on Youngs Ridge, because now that Arnie Martel owns property, I tried to put a cross culvert in, but the previous owner of the property would not let me do it. I spoke with him.
Let you do it.
Now, Arnie, I met with Arnie tonight, and right at the cemetery, we're going to do a culvert, going onto his property with a plunge pool, and that way, it'll take a lot of water off Crawford's property. I tried before we paved it, and I couldn't get the guy to agree to it.
Yeah, no, no.
Arnie bought it, and I talked to Arnie, he was all about it, whatever I need to do.
Oh, yeah, take advantage of that, I mean, is he going to give you something, some sort of drainage easement or anything like that?
I can get one, yes, from him.
That'd probably be a good idea, we get some sort of drainage easement.
Because we're adding that culvert to dump on his property.
Now, you're going to have that shoulder machine, would, I mean, I'm going to be working well, at least, just to get that bottom, you know, the shoulders down on that first coat.
I'm going to get the, coming down the hill on the right-hand side where it's dipped down, the other side's all filled in from winter sand. We've got to ditch that all out, fix it, but the other side, I'm going to do that. I'm also planning on doing, it's in here, is Gauding Road and County Road, and then-
All the shoulders.
Shoulders. And then with this shoulder machine, I have the Hopper Road on here, because the shoulders have taken a pretty good beating. I figured, let's, if I got it, let's try and get the shoulders back on that road as much as I can.
Yeah, I noticed we got that one driveway there.
The wash is out into the road.
Yeah, yeah, that was something we always had to stay on, because it comes down the driveway, wash a lot of that edge. Nice.
Hopper Road, that's that.
Gauding?
Gauding, I have that, I just, we're going to do that shoulder work on that. And so, that way, all the fresh hot tops done, and that's finished.
Any grading to be done?
I spoke with him Thursday morning, he said this week, I was down on-
Who's he?
Jeff Gudwin, the guy that's been scheduled for over a month to get the grading done. He said he would be here this week.
Great.
I was down on the Gauding Road dirt side, I put sixty-tonne material down the middle of it today, to fill all the potholes.
And you can grade that good stuff right into it, why is that, right?
That road's taking a beating with this weather, I mean, there's a lot of rock showing. I mean, I put a lot of material on that last year.
But I graded that, every, every time we graded that, we would just have trucks hauling gravel, that we lose so much dirt, because of traffic so fast down there, the dust, everything, and then rain.
Yep.
Blow off, you know, we put, you know, probably a hundred yards of that road every time we graded that. Because that's quite a section down through there.
It's a good section down there, so I wanted to get the potholes straightened out, because I had a resident call Town Hall yesterday, so I wanted to get right down there and take care of it.
And one, one thing that we were doing, I don't know if you guys are doing it or not, or whatever, but on the hills, we were hauling that ledge back in, that was the only thing that was holding the hills.
I finally got the first hill going down to hold, because we did a lot of ditching and crowning of the road after the, before the grading got done, we got a lot of prep work done. I had to dig it back out from plowing this year, because there was edges that, but hills are holding up pretty good now. So, we're in pretty good shape there.
So, all the, all the roads that need grading are going to be graded, or was it just this one you were talking about?
They all still need to be graded.
They'll be done this year?
So, he's going to come and make a loop and do all the roads will be graded at the same, at the same day.
Peacock.
Peck, Peacock, Gauding Road, and Flat Ground Road.
Great. Thank you.
And last night, I met with York County Water and Soil on Seventh Street yesterday.
Yep.
With drainage issues, they want to give us a grant towards some of the money, they'll pay sixty percent of the work down there. As you come down the hill towards the end, where Tim's father lives.
Yep. The culvert's probably plugged right up.
It's plugged, and I don't know if there's driveway culverts in there. You can't see anything in it, it's just filled in from winters and leaves, and people blowing leaves and whatever.
It's a really crappy spot for a culvert, we, I put that culvert there.
Yeah.
There's, there's not enough really drainage for it to work, but they wanted one.
Yeah, dig out that pool that you put in, and-
We put a pool in, but that filled in, so when that fills in, everything backs up.
So, they're willing to pay sixty percent of the work.
Oh, nice.
So, they have a grant up to fifteen thousand, so I just got to give them an estimate.
We have a, an ordinance where we're allowed to accept that, we vote on that every year, so it's an ordinance, but a warrant article.
There's a warrant article that talks about the treasurer having a copy of the grant on file, we need to see it and see-
There's some agreement that's got to be signed by the selectmen. Once I get the estimate to her, then she gives me an agreement, and I can bring it up to you.
I was just making sure we're allowed to, because I know, I know we, we vote on a warrant every year to make so.
As long as, as long as it doesn't encumber the town.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep, and it's work I always want to do anyways, so.
I got a call from a resident on West Shore Drive, saying that we're eligible for a grant for work that was done there. This is Scott Lansbury, he's with ASYCC. Could you ask Will to reach out to him and find out more about that?
He was supposed to have met somebody down there on West Shore Drive, about some sort of grant.
What's that side road that comes out there?
Shree from York County.
Willow?
Willow, having to do with work done on Willow.
Well, I'm sure next week when he's in Will Village.
Yeah. But there's a short timeframe on getting it, so we've got to follow up on it.
So, do I, I might as well do this as a clump, do it as a clump?
Sure.
Do I hear a motion? Actually, I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve the work for Buzzell Road, Peck Road, Peacock, Point, Garden, Hopper, and Youngs Ridge.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's Adam.
Where are we here, I go find the agenda, which is buried somewhere?
Public comment.
Public comment, we're at public comment already? Nice. Public comment.
I have a couple of questions for Adam.
For who?
Adam.
Adam, yep.
When you do Buzzell Road, you're only going to do part, half, half of it at a time, right? We can still get through it.
Oh, when they're paving it, they, they're going to, they're going to grind it, and they're going to-
Adam, come right on up.
Be dirt for probably like a week.
Okay.
And then, once they pave it-
Couldn't be a lot better than it is.
They do one side at a time.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's always access, it's going to be-
And, um, how far up on Buzzell are you going? From the Little Red, Little Red Schoolhouse to Langley Shores?
Yeah, so, from the vet, on Youngs Ridge.
Oh.
It's going to get tacked.
Okay.
And then they're going to go all the way down to Langley Shores, beginning of session, I think.
Okay.
That's going to be all.
Okay.
How far are you grinding? You're not grinding the whole thing, are you?
Charlie, they, I know you redid what you did.
Well, we ground that whole section all the way around to the corner, almost to the end.
But, there's a lot of cracking in that section. I don't know if it was just a, I didn't know if you did just, I don't know. I didn't know if you did just a base.
I'm going to have Charlie look at it.
Now, that we hauled in, you know, was two feet of type D on that.
Right, so, I mean, it's, it's in good shape, but there's a lot of cracking in the corner, it's probably lost about two and a half feet of that corner's gone. So, I don't know, I'm going to leave that up to them, their decision, they're the experts. I'm going to let them know what's going on before we do it, because I got to meet Charlie again over a couple of things, especially when we do Peck. I'm glad that's been sitting with dirt, because I found some issues that I need to address up on the hill. We got, it looks like a natural spring in the middle of it.
Where's that?
On Peck.
Yeah.